Been gone, I've been gone since six this morning, running, and the heat is definitely not helping.
All right, let's go.
All right, we'll go ahead and kick this meeting off, this June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, Board of Commissioners meeting, Town of Waxaw. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence to give thanks and praise.
They just use their flag in the United States of America to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we'll start off with the agenda. I would like to make a minor amendment to the agenda. The appointment of an alternate delegate or a new alternate delegate for WUMA, the Western Union Municipal Alliance. Where should we put that in the agenda? Would that be new business or start it off at the beginning?
I would suggest you just put it under new business.
Certainly. Thank you. I also have a new item to be added, resolution, transportation resolution as item J one under new business. J two, I suppose, yeah. And that would be under new business as well? Yep. Very well. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Motion to adopt agenda as amended?
All in favor. The agenda is so adopted. Moving forward, we will kick off general public comments. So it looks like we have three folks that have signed up for general public comments. You have three minutes to speak. Please direct your comments to the board as a whole and not an individual. Please keep them respectful, keeping in mind that this is a public hearing. And if you disrupt or somehow disturb this public hearing, you can be asked to be removed. So, three minutes. Start us off, former Commissioner Anne Simpson.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Anne Simpson. I live in the Lawson Community here in Waxaw. Tonight, the Town of Waxaw will recognize the retirement of Town Attorney Charles Buckley. Charles Buckley, I want to take a moment and express my deepest appreciation for your unwavering dedication and service to our community during the last six years. Your expertise, integrity, and commitment to fairness have not gone unnoticed. I have had the opportunity to work alongside Mr. Buckley while serving as Town Commissioner, and you are more than just a town attorney. You have been a trusted advisor, a mentor, and a friend to many. Your wisdom and guidance have been invaluable, and your legacy will live for years to come through the town's adopted ordinances, policies, and plans. I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude and thank you for your service. I wish you all the best in your retirement and look forward to seeing the new chapters you will undoubtedly write in your next phase of life. Thank you.
That wasn't to the board as a whole, but I think that's okay. Thank you. Next up, we have Jeff Carroll.
My name is Jeff Carroll. I live in Waxaw Meadows Plantation, which is in now Middle Springs. The reason I'm standing here, I saw the sign yesterday about the traffic survey again. I know the parkway is back on the agenda again and trying to push it around. I'm not against the parkway. I grew up here, so if you want to notice if you've got passion about this county, this area of Middle Springs, Marvin, Westy, Chappell, Waxaw, I'm the guy. I've seen it all. Waxaw was this beautiful heart years ago, beating. And I've watched it over the years, just getting harder and harder just to breathe through it and just, I've watched it struggle. And now I live where I live at. I lived and went into twenty-one years. I went there when it was nothing. So I came here to get away from that. And then after I got here, and I'm sorry which one said it a few weeks ago about, I did not know that the parkway was coming through my property. It was on my deed. It was not. So when you speak, speak the truth and not act like we don't know what we're doing. That hurt me more than anything that I represented would say that about my property. It's not on my deed. But when you go through this property, I do know that this town passed a piece of property or traded for a nice piece of property that the compost pile property was on. Traded it for seven acres to get into my property on the backside of my property to come through there. I'd much rather had that compost pile in them little seven acres trying to come through our property, which hurt me again of what y'all did. What you don't understand and don't know, I bought my property from a man, he's from Germany. He bought it in nineteen eighty from the Collins Farm, which Mark and them still own the little barn, the barn downtown. Everybody knows Mark. Mark and his family own the two hundred, oh, how many acres is he on this side? But this gentleman bought everything on the left side of Collins Road, which includes Waxaw Meadows. He developed it all off and he wanted, he had cattle on this property. And what he wanted to do, he wanted to put a road in there for an industrial park. But Waxaw went up, had him do it. Now, so while that road, you see in nineteen eighty, this road, I got maps of all this. This man passed away six weeks after he left here, back to Germany to be with his, be with his daughter. I'm just fortunate enough to be there now. But I have all these maps of all this land out here. I got thirty maps, big maps, of all this area out here he was going to develop. But none of it came true. He fell in love with that land. So what he do, he started just dividing them off into ten acre tracts. And everybody there has got ten acre to twenty acre tracts. The Raski Farms, there's one of the prettiest pieces, pieces of property. And I encourage anybody who wants to come walk with me through this, just to see what there is here in this county. It's very unique. But there's ways around this town. And what upsets me, there's ways around, I know we're building a parkway on this side of the county. I know they changed the name so the Hounds Connector, but we're still, it's coming. And they, it's, it's needed probably down there because of this Emerson Park, which tears my nerves up too.
Thank you.
That should not be there. The dynamics here is just shrinking and shrinking and shrinking. And the love I have here, it's not changed any. It just, it's a different kind of love.
Sorry to cut you off, but that was three minutes, so thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Joe Leffos.
Hi, thank you. Hi, as you know, I live on Old Providence Road where there's a new annexation being proposed here today, or new rezoning being proposed. I can't believe I'm standing here again to slow further development on the south side of the tracks where there are only two inlets to access downtown Waxaw and Providence Road. But I moved to this side of the tracks. We never dreamed that we would face the same demise as the north side of the tracks as most of the land here is limited outside of Waxaw Town jurisdiction. That all changed in twenty twenty when Pappas, Maury, Simpson, and McMillan voted to annex the preserve at Forest Creek. In twenty twenty-one, I and many others in the Waxaw Elementary School area woke up. I placed Jason Hall's election sign prominently on my lawn on Old Providence Road after having lunch with him after he had vowed to fight on behalf of what people like me wanted. In December of twenty-two, I and my fellow residents received more knives in our backs as Yarborough was annexed and rezoned. I had texted Mr. Hall before that vote explaining the ridiculousness of that zoning and the obvious lack of infrastructure that was not in place with the future roundabout being more than nothing and a future mouse wheel with our cars having no place to go on it. The awful apartments lining seventy-five feeding along with growing traffic from the southeast fill up Old Providence, making it a nightmare back then, and it is worse so now. His response was to ghost me and later yet vote yes on it. At the meeting on December ninth, twenty twenty-two, at the fifty-six minute mark, Charlie, our great legal counsel, made the most important statement that I think the board ever needed to hear regarding Yarborough. And he said, if you approve an unconditional zoning request, you in essence are giving a developer the opportunity to do whatever they want. On January tenth, and one month later, the five board members chose to ignore Charlie's advice and voted on a, and voted to approve Yarborough. And then later they were ousted in a landslide vote by the people, and it still continues now after that has happened. To make matters worse for the people of Waxaw, this same board changed the zoning settings for this neighborhood center thing. It by itself provides a developer a vast array of options to put into any development they want to do with the mix of homes, multi-dwelling units, and commercial. By God, you can even put in a business building with apartments on top of them with this zoning, which is just about what the man who is asking for today wants to do with the new property over here across from Waxaw Elementary. I visited with the people who live by this development. I live on the same street and know all of them, who feel like the choice of R three versus N C is between drinking a glass of rotten milk that has turned green or drinking a glass of sneaky sewer water. Actually, we have no choice in the matter other than to vent how disgusted we are with the board that did this to us. The only viable solution is to shelf this vote today and come back with a conditional zoning that makes, that takes into account the school, the zero commercial properties that are around it, and the circle of traffic debt that it goes into. And while you're at it, completely get rid of this neighborhood center. The zoning designation is a free ticket to do whatever a developer wants and is an atrocity for the Town of Waxaw that some of us love dearly. Please vote and change these things.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, next up, we have some recognitions. We'll call up Ms. Melody Schuler. Oh, I skipped the consent agenda because there was nothing on it. Do we need to formally approve an empty consent agenda? Very well.
All right, good evening, Board and Mayor. And so I have the honor of recognizing our public services team, Matt Cohen, Bradley Koek, and Josh Gordon. And so these guys have been instrumental in completing, helping us complete the charters of freedom project in front of the new town hall. That structure will house the Constitution and Charter of Independence and Bill of Rights. And so it'll be an educational piece for our residents to go and learn about those, that history. And so these guys, they helped with digging the foundation for the structures, pouring the foundation, as well as today, they were out there in the heat of the day pouring the cores and making sure that they set well. So we really want to appreciate everything that you all have done and put forth in completing this project. And so you'll be able to see the finished product by the end of August. And so do you guys want to say anything?
Thank you for letting us take a part in it. Appreciate it.
So Monroe just unveiled their charters of freedom a couple of weeks ago. And I can attest to the community, the foundations for these things is no joke. These foundations and the charters of freedom are meant to last. So I could attest to the work these guys have done. I can only imagine how hard it was over the last few days, so thank you.
Just another little tidbit on that, Mayor, for people to know, nine yards of concrete was used to build those. And so they're, they are not going to ever go anywhere.
Next up for recognition, we have a Ms. Justine Haynes.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Justine Haynes. I'm your programs manager with the Parks and Recreation Department. I am here to introduce our intern Maggie Lineb. Maggie is here with us for six weeks. She is a rising senior at Western Carolina with a major in criminal justice and a minor in Parks and Recreation. She's been crushing it out there, and she's been doing such a great job that everybody internally has been fighting over her in hopes that she'll want to come back and work in their division. But our hope is that she stays in programs. So you guys will see her out and about in town, and she probably will be cracking jokes or waving at you with a big smile. So this is Maggie.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the Parks and Rec Department for being so welcoming. And I, I mean, I've got nothing bad to say about them. They've been so kind and that was not.
That's a good career move.
Sorry. I got nothing bad to say, and I just want to thank them for welcoming me and everybody else that I've met, you know, within town hall, everything else. And I hope to be welcomed back again, maybe for real this time. But thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Next up, I would invite our town manager for a very, very special recognition for our retiring town attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, board members, Mr. Buckley. And I'll just say, Anne had, had great words at the beginning of this, of this meeting. And I just want to reiterate what, what she said and how much it's been an honor and privilege for me to work with you over this past five, five-plus years. I'll tell you, and I mean this, you know, I've been in the local government biz now for a hot minute, and you were the, the town attorney that I respect the most. And I appreciate that. And I've enjoyed all of our interactions, all of our phone calls, discussions. And my favorite question that I always ask you though, and you know, it's always at the beginning and the end of every one of our meetings is, you know, when, how was Matthews last night? And then did we finish before Matthews did the night before? So just always have a, a good fun. I just appreciated all the, all the advice, the professionalism. And Waxaw is definitely a much better place with you here. And you've set us up for a lot of success with your advice on our policies and plans, putting us in a better position to serve our citizens and improve the quality of life through everybody in Waxaw. So I just can't tell you how much I appreciate that. And then I want to read a resolution. And then Mayor has a little present for you as well. And then, of course, we can welcome anybody else that wants to say some words as well. Resolution of appreciation for the dedicated service of Town Attorney Charles Buckley III. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Waxaw, North Carolina, and Waxaw Town staff desires to acknowledge and express appreciation to Charles Buckley for his dedicated service to the citizens of Waxaw as town attorney. Whereas, Charles Buckley was appointed by the Waxaw Board of Commissioners to serve as Town Attorney in May of twenty eighteen. Whereas, Charles Buckley, as attorney for the Town of Waxaw for six consecutive years, has provided legal advice that has substantially improved the quality of life for the citizens of the Town of Waxaw. Whereas, Charles Buckley has supported with sound legal advice the town's development of numerous plans and policies that are designed to improve infrastructure and quality of life of Waxaw citizens. There's been no bigger advocate for the success of Waxaw than Mr. Buckley. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Waxaw, North Carolina, that Charles Buckley is hereby officially commended for his valuable service rendered to the Town of Waxaw in his official capacity as town attorney from May twenty eighteen to June twenty twenty-four. And hopefully this will be duly adopted after the mayor is able to take a seat and take this action here in a, in a little bit, but duly adopted and affected on this twenty-fifth day of June twenty twenty-four. Congratulations.
It is my humble honor to grant you a key to the Town of Waxaw. And I will add to that a heartfelt thank you and appreciation for your kind words, your openness, your friendly conversation, and your willingness and desire to help. And that's what I will appreciate most and take away forever. So thank you very much. Charlie Buckley, I give you the key to the Town of Waxaw.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Jeff. Mr. Mayor and Town Manager, Board of Commissioners, staff of this wonderful town, and all the citizens that are here tonight, and Anne, thank you very, very much. Oh, there you are. Now, I've been a municipal officer for fifty-five years. It's the first time in fifty-five years that I've even seen a key of the city, much less to receive one, and I shall cherish this forever. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, for making this possible. It has been indeed a pleasure to, to be involved with the town, to be with the staff and with the boards in the, in the past, and this board now. It's been an exciting journey, and it was refreshing to, to come here. Having been in a lengthy service before with another community and still am until June thirtieth, it was a new endeavor and it refreshed me. So I hope that that refreshment was able to produce a mind that wasn't so stagnant before. And so I thank all of you for this opportunity to have served. I thank the, the staff for working so closely with me and making me look better. And so I do appreciate everybody in the, here who is a staff member here tonight and those who aren't here who work very closely with me. But especially to the board and the mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve. It has indeed been a privilege to serve this community, and I wish it nothing but the best in the future. Sincerely, and thank you, and thank you all.
Because after the meeting, we have a little after-party. If you notice back there on the back table, there's a big cake. Now, I warned Charlie about this to make sure to not eat too much at your, at your dinner this evening to save a little room for cake after the meeting. So, and there's enough for everybody that wants to stick around afterwards too. So that's just an FYI to everybody, and we'll need to get rid of that cake, so. A little dessert. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll offer the mic to anyone who has any other words for the beloved Mr. Buckley. Okay.
I'll just go ahead and. Well, Charlie, I, I get emotional on stuff like this, but you and I have worked together for now under three mayors, and we had our ups and downs, and you always had. for now under three mayors and we had our ups and downs and you always had such wise words for the board and for me. There were times when you calmed me down and I just learned so much from you and I've really enjoyed working with you. But, and one thing I'll say is while we were going through the interview process to fill your shoes which are impossible, I learned how much the legal community appreciated and respected you for the work that you do. It's really going to be hard to fill your shoes, so, but I know that you have a very well-deserved retirement coming and some wonderful plans with you and your wife and I just really hope that you enjoy this next chapter.
Mine is short. We haven't had a very long history together, last six months, but you've been very helpful. And I know I've emailed you several times and we've gone back and forth and I've learned a lot and I really appreciate your patience and I wish you a great retirement. And if you happen to be bored on any Tuesday night, we're here, a seat for you right in the front.
The mic is always off. Charlie, I just wanted to say it has been an honor and a privilege to work with you, to learn from you, all the discussions that we have had, but more so to get to know you not just as a town attorney, but as a kind, gentle man that you are. And to know your wife as well, as she has come to our meetings and at times when you have left her outside in the car to sit. Locked, too. But I pray that you will continue to be blessed. I wish you every happiness, health, love, time with your family, and that the new chapter will be exciting and even more wonderful than the chapters that you've had previously, which you will be truly missed.
I think just one last thing, because it's kind of funny. Charlie and I share moments up here because the chief keeps it unruly cold in this building. And it was, Charlie and I always joke about it and it was during the last meeting where his beautiful wife said, "Well, it'd be okay if we cuddled together and kept warm." So I'm going to miss those times. It probably won't be appropriate for the next attorney, so. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie. It hasn't been very long, you coming here, but appreciate your advice and wish you a nice future.
And I couldn't let it go off the record without adding my sincere thanks. It is indeed an honor and privilege to have been supported by your knowledge and expertise. And I unequivocally cannot say that I've not been happier to ever call a lawyer anytime in my career than being able to call you. And so thank you for that.
Please, looking for a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve Resolution 2024014 of appreciation for the dedicated service of Town Attorney Charles R. Buckley III.
All in favor?
Aye.
This motion is so approved. Thank you, Charlie. Okay. Dry our eyes and we'll move on. Mr. James Kelly, I believe you have a carpo thingy.
So first up tonight is just a quick reminder about the active survey. You may have seen the signs downtown CRTPO 2055 Metropolitan Transportation Plan Survey. I'll dive into that momentarily. Just want to go over the background one more time. I will note that the survey is only active until July 3rd. So people always ask, "Well, what can we do to help you as far as transportation improvements, getting transportation improvements, move through the process?" This is one of those steps. So the CRTPO stands for Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization and they are the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO, for this region. They manage cross jurisdictions across Union County, Mecklenburg, and Iredale County as well, and they coordinate with 24-member jurisdictions. Waxaw is one of those. NCDOT, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, FHWA, which is the Federal Highway Administration, and the general public to fund transportation studies, projects, and plans throughout the region. Their mission is to provide leadership and collaboration with member communities and partners in developing our region's transportation system. And their vision is to establish a connected and equitable transportation system that provides mobility choices for the region. So what is an MTP? Well, in this context, and you'll see two different MTPs tonight, you'll see the Waxaw Master Transportation Plan, and that's separate from this plan. This is a regional metropolitan transportation plan that helps establish the vision for transportation across the region and identifies needs and deficiencies in the transportation network, recommends specific projects and strategies, creates an action plan for implementation, and helps shape policy and program decisions. So I'll direct your attention over to that figure to the right of the screen. That's the traditional stair-step approach as far as large transportation, regional transportation projects. The CTP, we've talked well in depth about that. That's the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. That's a 30- to 50-year plan. After the CTP, the next, really, the CTP, let me back up for a second. So the CTP is really your vision. So it's your wish list. Anything can be on the CTP. The MTP, the key difference is that the MTP is fiscally constrained. Now, what does that mean? We'll get more into depth on that here momentarily. But the MTP is the next step, the 20-year plan, and then ultimately, that's where you begin to prioritize various projects. And then you move to the TIP, which is your 10-year projects program for construction. And we'll actually be talking about that process here right after this. So again, the purpose of the MTP, in this case, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, is to be fiscally constrained and updated every four years. So what does that mean? Fiscally constrained is a demonstration of sufficient funds, whether it be federal, state, local, and private, to implement proposed transportation system improvements as well as to operate and maintain the entire system. The MTP considers multiple modes, all modes really, of transportation. And it's required to access federal funds for transportation projects and establishes the policy for transportation improvements. So as far as the engagement phase, project kickoff has already began. That survey opened up July, or excuse me, June 3rd, and it closes July 3rd. So you only have about a week or so left to respond to that survey. Now, going through the process, it will take time for CRTPO to analyze those results. They're going to come back in March of May of next year with a draft recommendation feedback as well as a plan review and validation that will go through October through December of next year. So Phase 1 Engagement, this is the one that's currently happening right now. The purpose is to raise awareness and identify needs. It focuses on outreach that reviews the goals and objectives. So as far as who helped to develop those goals and objections, Waxaw actually sits on the advisory committee with CRTPO. And we help, along with other jurisdictions throughout the region, come up with those goals and objectives. We communicate existing conditions for the MPO and we identify needs for each transportation mode. So again, the public comment period has already begun. It's almost out of time as far as July 3rd. The public will weigh in on both the goals and objectives as well as the transportation needs and identify candidate projects and ultimately help to establish the vision for transportation within the region. And the community can participate by using this website, and I'll show it to you here momentarily, for digital engagement opportunities as well as connecting with any remaining local events and outreach. And you can also attend the CRTPO or TCC board meetings. Those are open to the public as well. So moving on to the actual website, where you go to submit this comment is 2055mtp.org. And this really serves as the project hub and provides the opportunities to engage digitally and provides updates on ongoing activities, the project process, and it really is the repository for resources and deliverables. So I will briefly go there one more time before the survey closes and I strongly encourage the community to fill out this survey. So here it is, 2055mtp.org is what you go to. You simply scroll down. There's an overview provided, a lot of descriptions, and then you just click here, online survey and interactive map. And there's two options, there's the, or two tabs really, which is the Goals and Objectives Survey, which you can fill out just by hitting that next button. And then the interactive map feature is here and it's a drag-and-drop feature as far as pins. So you can see Waxaw has had a pretty good response relative to other municipalities so far, and I hope to see that grow even more. So as we zoom into Waxaw, you can see various intersections, you can see, you can click on various comments and see what other people are commenting. You can have this add a pin feature and just scroll to the point on the map where you want to do, or you want to place your comment. Simply place the pin, select the category, whether it be a corridor, an intersection, or an area. Let's say this is a general area of traffic congestion. I would note the road name, NC 16. I would also click, maybe there's some walking improvements that could be done there, assist mobility, ADA, biking, sure, driving, definitely. And then add any other comments that you have and quickly hit that submit button. And that's how your comments are saved to the survey. Now, I'm actually going to cancel out of that so that comment is not recorded as a part of this process, and that's the gist. So I will stop there and ask any questions before moving on to the next presentation.
Any questions from the board? I'll just highlight as well that CRTPO, its employees as well as its board members work very hard to try and serve the public's best interest as much as they possibly can. These surveys are crucial to guide them in their decision-making process. So I strongly encourage everybody to take the time to walk through the survey. It seems a little confusing and a little daunting, but take the time to go through the survey, answer these questions, provide your feedback, because it will get looked at. This is not something that CRTPO and its board members just kind of, "Okay, they did a survey, great, check the box." They will be looking at this data and they'll use it as a guide. So please, I encourage everybody to try and take the time to fill out these surveys. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So with that, we'll move right into the next presentation, which is an update on yet again another survey for NCDOT. And I will go ahead and say before we jump into this presentation, this is a multi-layered presentation. So there can be a lot of complications here as far as understanding, able to grasp those concepts. I'm going to try to break it down as simple as possible and provide you with a concise update. So the step, or let's start with first off, who is NCDOT? So NCDOT, if you don't know, is the North Carolina Department of Transportation and they are responsible for building, repairing, and operating highways, bridges, and other modes of transportation, including ferries, especially to the east in Wilmington in North Carolina. They were formed in 1915 as the State Highway Commission and the Board of Transportation governs the department and is the decision-making body for the NCDOT. Now, there are multiple divisions of NCDOT. The most likely that you have seen driving around are those yellow or white trucks with the logo on there that say Division of Highways. Those are the people that we work most frequently with. Not to say that that's all of DOT. DOT also encompasses the Division of Motor Vehicles. It also encompasses aviation, bicycle and pedestrian, the ferry division to the east, as well as the rail division, et cetera. So there are multiple divisions to the department and their mission is to connect people, products, places safely and efficiently with customer focus, accountability, and environmental sensitivity to enhance the economy and vitality of the state of North Carolina. So what is the STIP? There's that stair-step again. So the STIP stands for the State Transportation Improvement Program. And this is really your 10-year project program. So once a project is on the STIP, it is moving forward for construction. It's just a matter of when. So the STIP identifies the transportation projects and strategies that CRTPO and NCDOT plan to undertake over the next 10 years. And this is the region's way of allocating transportation resources among the various capital and operating needs of the area based on a clear set of short-term transportation priorities. And all projects receiving federal funding must be in the STIP. And this is updated at least every two years. Now, as far as prioritization P 7.0, think of the funding, how DOT separates their funding out in various buckets. So there's different tiers. Similar to the Waxaw Master Transportation Plan, we have various tiers for projects. The state uses various tiers as well. And it's really based upon the Strategic Transportation Investments, or STI, legislation. And really, these three buckets, so 40% of all the funds go to statewide mobility. And that tier is specified based upon 100% data-driven focus. Now, these statewide mobility projects, you can think of these as your interstates or US routes. That's what this statewide mobility tier is for. And you can't swap funds between the two tiers with the current legislation. Now, 30% of the total funds go to what's called a regional impact tier. And when you see regional impact, think your NC routes. And the selection of these projects are based on 70% data-driven and 30% local input. So that's critical. So here's where local input starts to become important, because local input can be used as a method or justification to deviate from STI legislation. And I'll get to that more in depth here momentarily. So regional impacts includes your statewide mobility projects not funded at the statewide level. And the regional impact funding is based on population of the seven regions across North Carolina. Now, you might say, "Okay, if it's just based on population, your urban areas are going to get most of the funds." Well, take a look at the next step. So 30% of the funds are separated out into what's called a division needs tier. And these are your secondary routes predominantly. And that selection of projects is based upon 50% data-driven and 50% local input. And the funding is based upon an equal share across the 14 divisions. So I hope that was a concise way to illustrate that. Just think of these as separate tiers and separate funding buckets and separate projects. So again, statewide, think interstates. Regional, think your NC routes. And division needs tier, think upon your secondary routes or roads that may not be listed as a state route. So as far as total funding, as far as that statewide mobility category, there's approximately $1 billion available this go-around. And that's just statewide, so that's your interstates, okay? Moving on to the regional impact tier, here's where we start to get some red numbers. So again, there's seven regions across the state. Union County is within Region E. And currently, within that particular region, there is a $471 million deficit for projects. So DOT loves to use the word overprogrammed. To put simply, that is just, they have too many products on the books and they're in the hole financially. Now, what about the division needs tier? So again, there's 14 divisions. That's spread across equally per division. Again, you can see that the NCDOT Division 10 is approximately $108 million deficit there as well. So what does that mean? Well, as we get more information from CRTPO, things will become more clear. As of right now, those red lines could mean projects could be delayed, put simply. As far as the P 7.0 schedule, again, I'll just reiterate that local input point allocations can be adjusted based upon results of public input. So with a deficit, you know, they have a certain list of projects. It's important to get your input out there as far as which projects they should move forward with. And again, public feedback is justification for deviating from the STI legislation methodology adjustments. So right now, DOT has a survey for regional tier projects. Majority of Waxaw projects are division tier. So they'll have another engagement here later in the fall and that one will be critical. So I'm just going to direct you to the NCDOT's website and they do have this public comment period open now for regional tier projects. and that closes July 17th. So here is yet again, another opportunity for the community to engage and provide feedback as far as transportation improvements. Again, this is for regional tier projects. DOT will provide another comment period later this fall for division tier projects. So this is available on DOT's public involvement page. So if you actually click on that, or go to that page, you'll be redirected to the survey there. And it gives you a walkthrough video on how to do it, and you just simply hit take that survey. It takes you to a map, and that map, you can select your county. Again, realize this is statewide, so you can select Union County in this case, and then provide your comments there. So with that, that was again, a lot of information to process, so I will pause for questions.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you very much, James.
All right, thank you.
And again, participation is strongly encouraged. The squeaky wheel gets the oil, so it's time for all of us to squeak if we want some of the state funds.
Could I agree more there? So, thank you. For the next item, I'm going to pass this out in advance.
Just one question I did want to ask, sorry, for, just for public clarity.
Sure.
An example of a STIP project, that would be the Highway 16 widening, correct?
That is correct.
And that's due to start within the next couple of years?
So the 16 widening project is programmed for fiscal year 29 construction start, and is anticipated to have a construction end of fiscal year 2032.
So all of that's falling in that 10-year window you mentioned?
That's correct. Now, given the current red numbers, those, those schedules could change. So I, I do encourage the community to provide input, because your input is valuable with those projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. James Kelly?
All right, so the next item is the Waxahau Master Transportation Plan, and this one's going to be presented in a different fashion. So as opposed to a normal presentation style, you all will be given a printout of the report. And just to provide a brief summary on that report, you know, what's, what's the intent behind this? Well, really, the Waxahau Master Transportation Plan serves as a strategic blueprint for developing and enhancing transportation infrastructure in Waxahau. It aims to address current transportation needs and anticipate future demands through a comprehensive approach that includes roadway improvements, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, traffic management, and safety initiatives. The plan is formulated based on data analysis, stakeholder engagement, and alignment with community goals to ensure a sustainable and efficient transportation system to address the transportation needs of the town of Waxahau. The overarching goal of Waxahau's Master Transportation Plan is to create a vibrant, locally-driven plan that identifies critical transportation improvements, creates a defensible transportation implementation strategy, and includes an action plan that outlines priorities, funding options, and partnership needs. So this update, the 2024 update to the Waxahau Master Transportation Plan is specifically designed to be user-friendly. So what do I mean by that? The last plan was several, several pages long, okay? So we reduced this down to approximately 25 pages, so it's actually a pretty easy read. And we have a map that summarizes all the projects throughout the town as well. This user-friendly condition offers a condensed version of the comprehensive 2020 Waxahau Master Transportation Plan. And this update provides a streamlined and accessible overview prioritizing essential projects and initiatives to guide the town's transportation development. For a more detailed and all-inclusive examination of Waxahau's transportation strategies and visions, users are encouraged to refer to the 2020 Waxahau Master Transportation Plan. So a lot of the, or actually, all the information in here has already been approved by the board in the past as far as the project prioritization tiers, the community engagement. So as you scroll throughout here, you know, the first section is obviously introduction. It provides the community with a background on what the W M T P is, the process, the, as far as what it provides, what it prioritizes, the purpose, and the plan implementation itself. The second part of the report focuses on the community engagement period that we've had concluded a few months ago. And that summarizes the results from the community engagement, specifies when those workshops were held, and summarizes those key results as well. And then starts to touch on the seven unfunded projects and their prioritization. Now, Section 3 is really the part of the project, or excuse me, of the plan that shows those product prioritization tiers, which you approved at your last board meeting. Obviously, tier one projects. So when you think of these separate tiers, tier one ranks higher than tier two, and you can move throughout the tiers as far as flexibility. So if projects become more easier to obtain at a certain point over time, perhaps it's better to invest resources into that particular project versus one or another. So there's tier one project prioritization that you all have adopted before, tier two. And then also, we wanted to keep track of the projects already programmed from the tier two prioritizations, just to keep those in mind and for to have a all-inclusive report. And then finally, Section 4 summarizes the various funding opportunities or considerations and dives into what we talked about before as far as the state, NC DOT, the STIP, the region, CRTPO, and provides a very detailed overview in a condensed manner, thus, that's easier to read. And then also provides more of a dive into understanding the cost to build, right? So a lot of people, for example, think roundabouts cost the same as signals, and they don't. Signals cost maybe a couple hundred grand, roundabouts will cost you about four to five million. So there is a huge difference between these various types of transportation improvements. And then it dives into the transportation opportunities as far as STIP funding, PAL bill, and walks everybody through those various considerations. And then finally, sums it all up with a nice conclusion. And then at the very end of the document, provides a map overview of the, what's in red, programmed projects. So these projects, when you see red, think the next three to seven years. Some maybe even sooner than that. And blue is what is currently unfunded. So that's subject to the prioritization, which you guys have already adopted. And then green, we've added in some of those larger pedestrian projects. I will comment that users should refer to Waxahau's pedestrian plan for more detailed updates as far as those pedestrian projects. But just to list a few of the bigger ones, Howey Mine, Pine Oak, 12 Mile Creek, Sunny Way, et cetera. So those are some of the, the larger ones that are included on the W M T P. So with that, I will stop there and if, answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? All righty, I think we will go for a motion at this point then? So can I get a motion to approve the Waxahau Master Transportation Plan?
Motion to approve the Waxahau Master Transportation Plan as presented.
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much, so adopted. Next up, we have Mr. Blair Israel. Bit of a rezoning petition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Blair Israel, Town of Waxahau Senior Planner. And tonight, we are taking another look at a petition for rezoning of 1020 Old Providence Road, presented two weeks ago at a public hearing. And just, I'll go through the slides pretty quickly, and if you have any questions about any of the subjects, we can certainly go back. But this is a rezoning, the applicant is here tonight, Matthew Kalanowski, for the property that's located on Old Providence Road at the corner of Arbor Drive. You can see here in the map version, two different map versions. You can see the property outlined in red on the right, and see the, the elementary school, cemetery, Old Providence Road, Arbor Drive. And on the left, you can see a little bit more context of its proximity to downtown in the mill. The current zoning, as you can see here, R3 Residential, and R1 to the, to the south, and the Museum of the Waxahau is there in R4. The Future Land Use Plan, which is from the Waxahau 2040, shows this property proposed as, as mixed-use development. Our mixed-use development zoning is the NC Neighborhood Center. And we reviewed this as far as the different dimensional standards, the purpose for NC. And you'll see also the buffer diagram that shows when you have NC next to residential, that there's a 10-foot buffer required, and that's to be planted and such, can include a fence. And then the details at the bottom, which I've blown up here, are for buildings that would be there, whether they would be commercial, the limit for the footprint of those buildings, the, the size. And then if there are, a lot of stipulations about if there's going to be any residential proposed. And so you can see those in detail, we can go back to those if you like. But I want to point out tonight some things that were not really brought out as clearly in the previous presentation, and that is the proposed pedestrian improvements. You'll see a map on the right there, it's from our adopted 2023 pedestrian plan. And you can see the intersection, you see the star, that's the property, the blue star there. And you'll notice that there's an INT 27, that's an intersection improvement that's, that's proposed as part of that plan. You'll see the dashed lines, shared use path that's going up Old Providence, and then going south from there, shared use path and sidewalk that's proposed. And then a greenway that can, that goes further east. The solid brown lines are existing sidewalk. For the NC zoning, because of the development and the construction that would go on, the, the road would be, you know, disturbed by that construction, and it needs to be put back. It would be put back according to the engineering standard for that road, which would include a sidewalk on that north side. So there's not one there now, but there would be with this development. The development also, as you can see there in the fine print, helps to pay for these other pedestrian improvements. So anyway, here's a copy of the consistency statement that staff recommends. The rezoning is, request is consistent with the Waxahau 2040 Future Land Use Map, as I showed earlier, and is reasonable in the public interest as a parcel, as a parcel that's at a, a corner lot, it's a large parcel, and it's along a, a, a well-traveled north-south connector road, and provides, and can provide a diversity of the tax base with the business development. So the planning board, of course, reviewed this petition on May 21st, voted unanimously for favorable recommendation. The public hearing two weeks ago, as you can see, the letters went out to all the, all the neighbors. There's a postmarked copy of the letter that was received by the folks that did get up to speak, that lived just across the street. They live on actually 1100 Old Providence Road. Their comments specific to the property were that the applicant has been very informative on his plans, that the plan sounds good, but cautioned about the presence of the commercial growth near the cemetery on Arbor Drive. So going over the, the recorded notes, that's what was said. So what staff recommends is a motion to approve petition RZ 015341-2024, and the reasonable, the reasonableness and consistency statement as presented. So I'd like to pause here and ask if there are questions or things we want to talk about further.
Any questions from the board at this time?
I just wanted to say that I did speak to Mr. Kalanowski, and we had a good conversation about his intentions for the project. His intentions, I think, they sound great, it's a commercial project. I did get feedback from the neighbors, and just like Mr. Lappo said, they don't really like either option, the R3 or the NC. But for the, the most part, the feedback came back that the preference would be for the NC. And I will take Mr. Kalanowski's word that it's a quality project, and the commercial in there, he's really vetting who's, who's going there and, and keeping traffic in mind.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to approve petition RZ 015341-2024, and the reasonableness and consistency statement as presented?
Motion to approve petition RZ 015341-2024, the reasonableness and consistency statement as presented.
All in favor?
Yes, so read it.
Read it.
You have to read it.
Consistency and reasonableness statement. This rezoning request is consistent with the Waxahau 2040 Future Land Use Map, and is reasonable and in the public interest as the parcel is a large corner lot along a busy north-south connector road, and it will provide diversity to the tax base.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed, this mash, this motion passes, the zoning is now granted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. James Kelly again, second reading for the adoption of a proposed change on a speed limit.
Hello again, so this is the second reading for an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance, Section 66-57, speed limits. So to provide an overview and context, this is a proposed amendment to Section 66-57 of the Code of Ordinances, and to provide that history and context again, West North Main Street from NC-16, or North Broom Street, to Rehoboth was a NC DOT maintained street with a statutory speed limit of 35 miles per hour. Now, the town has since taken over maintenance of that roadway from Rehoboth to NC-16. Now, if you continue west up to Waxahondian Trail, that's still state-maintained. This section is town-maintained. Again, we're just requesting to amend the posted speed limit of that road section from 35, the statutory 35, to a uniform 25 miles per hour, sign and enforce accordingly. So with that, I'll ask for a requested action.
Questions? Can I get a motion to adopt ordinance, ORD 2024-019, amending the posted speed limit of West North Main Street from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles per hour from Rehoboth to North Broom Street?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance, ORD 2024-019, amending the posted speed limit of West North Main Street from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour from Rehoboth Road to North Broom Street.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion is so approved?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lisa Thompson? Next amendment time.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Lisa Thompson, I'm the Planning Director for the town. I'm here tonight to bring forward petition TA 152024. This is an amendment to our park land fee in lieu, it's Section 8.9. We went into detail at the last meeting, so I won't go back through this. It's 160D 804, it's subsection D, it allows us to do it. Bring your attention to that Supreme Court case, Dolan versus the City of Tigard. That was where the exaction has to be proportionate to the impacts of the development. So we have to keep that in mind as we move forward. At the last meeting, I was asked to look at the numbers to see if we could bring the single-family detached closer to a multifamily number. I'm glad I was asked to do so. After receiving the census data, we, we can do that. I found out that our single-family attached and detached persons living in each unit was very similar. So I'm recommending that that acreage be increased to 1/30 of an acre per dwelling unit. And then the multifamily is 1/35 of a unit per acre. Here's some math. So we average about 2.3 dwelling units per acre. And according to the census data, we average about 3.33 persons per dwelling for a single family, and 2.85 per multifamily, so a lot higher. We have a lot of families with kids, you know, with our school system here. So we were able to increase those park acreage amounts. So the goal is one acre park per 100 persons. If we do an example, single-family development, about 100 acres, times that 2.3 average, it's about a 230, um, single-family units, times that, times 3.33 persons per dwelling, you get 765, and then divide that by 100, that's about 7.65 acre park donation. And then that updated fee in lieu would be the same. That equals out for the multifamily as well. That equals out for the multifamily as well. That decision to choose the parkland dedication or donation to the town rests with you all or that fee in lieu. So it'd be that tax value for that number of acres. Reasonable and consistency statement is there for you all, and the recommended action is a motion to approve. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Thank you for getting out the pencil and doing a little more homework on that. I certainly appreciate it. Could I get a motion to approve text amendment petition TA 152024 and the consistency statement as presented?
Motion to approve text amendment TA 0152024, park and open space dedication or fee in lieu and the consistency statement as presented. Do I need to read the consistency? Okay. The text amendment request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals for the town of Waxaw and is reasonable and in the public interest as it accommodates the recreational needs of residents and helps the town expand parks and greenway infrastructure.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion is so passed. Thank you very much, Lisa. Don't go far. We have another text amendment.
Thank you. So this was a text amendment for schools and public facilities. This was presented back in May and tabled. It's text amendment 14-2024. It's to amend chapters one and five. And to go straight to it, it's 5.4, it's the general subdivision criteria for the reservation of land. So basically, when a development comes to staff, we will notify the appropriate agency and give them 30 days on whether they wish to reserve a site. The applicant would then go through a preliminary plat, preliminary plan approval process through you guys. And after that approval, they have 18 months if a site is identified on that plan for that agency to either purchase or condemn if needed. If that's not done within that 18-month period, that reservation is released. That 18-month period is per state statute. Speaking with the town attorney, that should reflect the state statute language, so that cannot be reduced. But these sites that are identified are up to you. They have to be identified on that comprehensive plan. So this is for a future fire department, speaking with Chief Regoli. He's looking for land somewhere north of Cuthbertson on the north side, future police substation on the south side of the tracks. We could identify that. And working with Jeff, he would be notified, and then we'd have that 18 months to purchase that land. But that land has to be identified on a comprehensive plan by you all. Similar for school. So it's it's public school facilities and public services, police and fire.
But they have to have a conversation with the Union County Board of Education to identify where they want to propose those locations to be.
Correct. Steph has met with the school planner. She's no longer with them, Catherine Brown. I haven't heard if they've replaced that planning position. As of, you know, a few months back, they had not identified any sites, but we will continue to work with them as proposals come to fruition to to do so. So once that is identified, we would bring a map amendment to you all to add it to the comprehensive plan. Planning Board heard the text amendment April 16th, unanimously recommended approval. We had that public hearing May 14th, and no one signed up to speak. And we are looking for a motion to approve and then the reasonable and consistency statement as presented.
Can I get a motion to approve text amendment 142024 and the consistency statement as follows?
A motion to approve text amendment 142024 and the consistency statement. The text amendment request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the town of Waxaw and is reasonable in that it promotes the orderly development of the town to secure adequate rights of way or easements for street or utility purposes, secure adequate spaces for recreation, open space and school sites and future public facilities.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is so passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Next up, I believe we have the new business. The new business will be the appointment of an alternate delegate for Wuma. Wuma meets at 4:00 PM once a month at various locations. The primary delegate has not been attending these meetings, and the alternate delegate has had difficulty attending these meetings. Therefore, I'm willing to step down as the alternate, and I would nominate Commissioner Susanna Wedra as the new alternate delegate for Wuma. All in favor?
Well, I may make small adjustment if you don't mind.
Please.
Because I'm the primary, but I honestly, I'm having awful time trying to make these meetings. I might actually recommend Susanna be the primary and I'll be the secondary.
I'm fine with that. So so I guess we'll take this one at a time. So I would like to get nominations for the primary delegate for Wuma.
I nominate Susanna Wedra.
All in favor?
Aye.
Susanna Wedra, you are now the primary delegate to Wuma. Can I get nominations for the secondary delegate to Wuma?
Nominate Jason Hall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Jason. You are now the alternate.
Thank God.
You are very welcome. And next up, we have a resolution on the table?
So I have a few comments to go with the to go with the resolution, if that's if that's I sit before you today to present a resolution that is a call for action and a beacon of hope for our community, for our growing community. The resolution to implore the Union County Board of Commissioners to cooperate with Waxaw to develop transportation solutions addresses a critical need that impacts us all, improving our transportation infrastructure to accommodate growth and alleviate congestion. As stewards of this community, we must provide an environment where all residents can thrive. The town of Waxaw has carefully strategized to plan transportation networks that mitigate traffic congestion, accommodate long-term growth, and this resolution seeks to embrace regional connectivity and enable participation in state funding programs. It is crucial to note that the creation of connected and alternate road networks is not just a matter of convenience, but a pressing necessity. Such networks have been proven to reduce trips and miles driven, thereby alleviating congestion. A recent study has revealed that a staggering 67.5% of the traffic in downtown Waxaw is non-local, pass-through traffic, affecting all residents regardless of their proximity to proposed Waxaw Parkway alignment. This stark reality underscores the urgent need for a regional transportation solution. The existing train tracks in Waxaw contribute significantly to traffic bottlenecks at train crossings. The Waxaw Parkway planned for decades promises to alleviate this congestion and provide much-needed connectivity. Waxaw is not just part of Union County, but a significant contributor to its prosperity. Our town's property tax revenue, which exceeds 17 million annually, is a testament to our economic strength. It is only fair that we receive support and investment commensurate with our substantial contribution. The recent decision by Union County Board of Commissioners to remove the Waxaw Parkway from their comprehensive transportation plan is not just a step backward, but a significant step back. This decision made without any alternative solution not only burdens future citizens and commissions, but also undermines our ability to effectively self-govern. It is a decision that we cannot afford to overlook. The town of Waxaw, in the town of Waxaw, we believe in the power of community and the importance of working together for the common good. Psalm 133:1 says, "How good and pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity." Today, I urge us to embrace this unity and advocate for what is right and just for Waxaw. Therefore, let us implore the Union County Board of Commissioners to reconsider and approve the recommendation of Union County Transportation Planning Staff and update the comprehensive transportation plan to include the proposed alignment of the Waxaw Parkway. Let us move forward with faith and determination in ensuring that our infrastructure reflects the growth and potential of our town. So that's just a summary for what I'm proposing to, as a resolution from the town, based on the comments I've just entered. And so I suppose it's appropriate at this point to take any questions.
Oh my God, do I have to read the whole?
Do I have to read this? Do I have to read this resolution as well? Okay.
We didn't put this in the public comments session, so that would be a decision for the board if we want to take public comments on this. Do you want to go ahead and read it first, Jason?
I'll go ahead and read it. Resolution to implore Union County Board of Commissioners to cooperate with Waxaw to develop transportation solutions. Whereas Waxaw has developed deliberate strategies for planning transportation networks and infrastructure to mitigate traffic congestion and accommodate long-term growth. Whereas Waxaw seeks transportation solutions which embraces regional connectivity and enables participation in state funding programs. Whereas the FHWA, NC DOT, and CRTPO acknowledge the creation of connected and alternate roads, networks reduces trips and miles driven, which reduces congestion. Whereas, based on a recent study, 67.5% of the traffic in and around the area of downtown Waxaw is non-local, pass-through traffic, which illustrates all residents in the area of Waxaw are directly impacted. Regardless of their proximity to the proposed Waxaw Parkway alignment, by the need of a regional transportation solution is needed to accommodate existing traffic and alleviate bottlenecks and congestion in downtown Waxaw. Whereas, the existing train tracks in Waxaw experience significant daily train usage, which creates one of the most significant traffic bottlenecks at train crossings. Whereas, the Waxaw Parkway has been planned for decades as a way to alleviate congestion at train crossings and provide connectivity between existing collector roads and thoroughfares, most heavily traveled by Waxaw residents. Whereas, limited progress has been made over the past several decades related to the construction of the Waxaw Parkway due to, among other things, significant costs of the crossing, crossing the railroad tracks. Whereas Waxaw contributes a substantial and growing share of property tax revenue, more than 17 million annually, to Union County and deserves support and investment from the county commensurate with the town's tax contribution. Whereas, the Union County Board of County Commissioners voted on April 15, 2024, to egregiously remove the Waxaw Parkway from Union County-supported projects to be included in the comprehensive transportation plan. Whereas, because of the actions of the Union County Board of County Commissioners, it is significantly less likely that funding from CRTPO and/or NC DOT for Waxaw's critical road infrastructure, including the Waxaw Parkway, will be appropriated. Whereas, the recent actions of the Union County Board of Commissioners are another example, in a long history of examples, of delaying the implementation of crucial infrastructure investments by deferring needed road and utility investments, which will significantly burden future citizens and commissions. Whereas, the actions of the Union County Board of County Commissioners to eliminate the Waxaw Parkway from the comprehensive transportation plan was done without any provided alternative solution or future strategy. Whereas, members of the Union County Board of County Commissioners publicly stated and by their actions have shown a willful disregard for North Carolina General Statute 136, subsection 66.2, which requires comprehensive transportation plans to be developed as a planning tool to, quote, "serve and serve present and anticipated travel demand in and around the municipality, including the consideration of population growth, economic conditions, and prospects, and patterns of land development in and around the municipality." Whereas, the actions of the Union County Board of County Commissioners were punitive against the citizens of Waxaw due in part to the lack of representation of western Union County towns on the all-at-large elected Board of County Commissioners. Whereas, the Union County Board of County Commissioners, through its past and recent actions related to critical infrastructure, have infringed on our town's ability to effectively self-govern and implement established strategic plans for the good of our citizens. Whereas, the Union County Board of County Commissioners vote on April 15, 2024, show contempt for the citizens of Waxaw through its lack of willingness to engage in the creation of any strategy which might help alleviate existing congestion by refusing to participate in a CRTPO-facilitated collaboration of multiple municipalities. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Waxaw in North Carolina that the Union County Board of Commissioners take the following actions. Reconsider and approve the recommendation of the Union County Transportation Planning Staff and the request of the Town of Waxaw to update the comprehensive transportation plan to include the proposed alignment of the Waxaw Parkway, duly adopted and effective this 25th day of June 2024.
Thank you. Good read now.
Thank you.
So I appreciate the spirit of what's trying to be done here, but I acknowledge the fact that it is just a resolution. It's not legally binding. It in no way mandates the county or requires the county to do anything. But I will also add to that, there are actually several steps being taken as we speak, working with local members around and local municipal leaders around western Union County to try and come up with an alternate solution that folks might approve. So while they have turned down or the county has rejected the existing alignment, the fact remains, we need to continue to work with the county to come up with an agreement on what other alignments are possible. If no other alignments could be found, then at least we can then tell the county, we've looked at this from all angles, nothing is better, this is the best. But until that homework is done, I think resolutions like this do nothing more than to kind of sour the relationship that I'm trying to cultivate with other members around the region.
This doesn't really promote unity. I mean, it's got scalding, insulting language. I'm not going to bet for this.
And as for myself, I have worked to get Minneamur Springs Mayor Becker to the table. He's reached out to Bob Cook. Bob Cook's been on vacation for a couple of weeks, and I know that they're working to get representation from the county to the table. I do not think this is a productive step in brokering goodwill. To me, it's an ultimatum, and we need to just put this aside and meet somewhere in the middle. I think together we can come with some good ideas and resolve these problems. This has been 30 years in the making, and I don't think another month or so is going to make or break us. It will ruin more relationships. But I think waiting a little bit longer and extending that goodwill a little bit will go a long way. I think we have to be reasonable here, and I can't support sending this. It has no teeth. I think we could do this with meeting with people, getting everybody in the same room without sending a note. It would liken this to, you know, a, you know, a breakup text. I mean...
Did you hear the meeting and hear the words that the commissioners said when they voted against this? It doesn't sound like they're wanting to work with with Waxaw or come up with alternatives. I remember Melissa Merrill saying, "It's not a good project."
But what does this achieve, though? I mean, it's, you know, if you feel that you don't agree with what they decided, what does it achieve to send something like this?
This is part of the legislative process. Resolution is part of the process. I mean, you know, we could get signs and picket, I guess, too, but this is part of the process that is an adult way to handle these things. And so, yeah, it's it's been on the, it's been on the books for 30 years, for sure. The alignment's changed a little bit from time to time, but it's worked its way. These things, these roadways take forever. 485 just finished when I moved here. It was started in the late 50s, early 60s. It just, the circle just stopped. And so these things take a while. They take a long time. And so this being on there for 30 years, probably the average. And so now we're at a, at a point where it's garnered enough attention from the CRTPO and other bodies where they're ready to really start putting some meat behind it. And so to- And so to backtrack, kick the can down the road for another time by the county doesn't, doesn't really make sense. And so we're following a legal process to say, hey, as adults, we disagree. We think you should reconsider. This is a, this is a good and decent plan. We just unanimously approved tonight the Waxaw Master Transportation Plan. And if you weren't paying attention, on page seven, where it's got the community project prioritizations, did you see what was number one?
Yeah, no, I saw it was number one.
Okay. So everybody saw what was number one, and that's what we're saying. Hey, we're telling the county again, hey, this is important. This is the number one thing. And we represent the town of Waxaw. That, that's the people we represent. And so they have clearly said, this is important. It was the number one thing in, in, in your campaign. I, one of mine. I took it right off your website. Happy to read it. I will, in fact. The, the, for NC State Roads, it would be profitable to get NCDOT permission to work on them through, and through fiscal discipline, allocate town money to the most urgently needed road improvements. The most urgently needed road improvements. Now you said through fiscal discipline, allocate town money, so I don't know if you're implying that the town paid for it entirely, but we have an opportunity here where the, the state and federal government could contribute to this alignment. And what we have to consider, what we have to be thinking about, is that sixteen is going to be widened. Four-lane highway that's going to terminate at the CVS and the post office with nowhere else for it to go. And every time I ask, well, what's your solution? Every time I ask the county, what's your solution? What's your alternative? There's nothing. They don't have one.
And that's why we need to talk to them. And again, I agree with the spirit of this resolution, but what this resolution is saying is exactly what I've been doing at meeting with CARPO, meeting with Rick Becker, meeting with members of the county and members of the CARPO Board itself. So there are irons in the fire and there are plans to present new pathways as well, not just the current alignment, but perhaps alternatives to the alignment. So there is activity afoot that is basically addressing everything you've put forth in this resolution. So again, I agree with the spirit, but I don't think it's a constructive way to get to where we want to be. My approach has always been, people disagree with you, go talk to them, figure out why, find out where the disagreement is. And that's what I've been doing.
Well, that's, that's great, but we're, all we're doing is saying, this is what Waxaw needs and wants. Why is that hard to at least hand that over to them?
The language is inflammatory. I mean, we're talking about the Parkway ending at the post office, and Emerson was just approved for eight-hundred-and-fifty units with no infrastructure. So, I mean, it's silly.
That's exactly why we need the Parkway. And yet the county, the county doesn't want it, there's, you, they were even saying, they were saying that because we approve all of this growth, which by the way, was approved twenty years ago, you know, that we don't deserve having this road. That's basically what they said. They, they held bias against Waxaw over the growth in Waxaw.
I think a lot of people are upset with the growth in Waxaw. We're talking about Mineral Springs. I myself am not happy with the rapid growth, which is why I decided to run, to try to stabilize it the best that we can. And so still doesn't answer the question on how, why we would make it worse by approving and, and upzoning properties and pre-zoning from R-ones to R-fores in an area that has no infrastructure and that will bottleneck into downtown, knowing that.
So we're just going to do nothing?
I'm not saying doing nothing.
Because that's, that's kind of what the county is saying.
I'm trying to convey to you that we're not doing anything.
I haven't heard, what, huh?
I'm trying to convey to you that nothing, we are doing things. I am doing things. I have been working with CARPO and working with other regional leaders to try and put...
I'm, I'm not saying that you're not trying. I'm not. I just haven't seen anything from the county. I mean, every, I watch every one of their meetings and their language is...
To fix a thirty-year problem, I might, I might need more than six months to fix a thirty-year problem. So if you can give me a little bit more time to start bringing some stuff to the table, we can do that.
I think I'll just...
The most effective way to try and do that is to work with our partners in the region and collaborate and not put out resolutions that might, you know, bug people.
Yeah, we really don't think that yelling at each other from afar does anything, you know? We've got to get in the same room and talk to each other, right?
They won't come to the room.
How do you know?
And then we go to their room.
They, they had that opportunity in that meeting and they said they didn't want to meet. That's what they said.
Which is why I've reached out to them. So, that's right.
Well, until then, we have to do something. Very well.
Sixty-seven point five percent of the traffic in and around is pass-through. I, I, I want to be sure that statistic is understood because we can sit here and say no to new developments until we're blue in the face, but we're affected. Our town is affected by regional impacts, things we can't control, things the Board of County Commissioners can't even control. Go six miles down the road into South Carolina and you'll see Lancaster and Fort Mill, they're growing like gangbusters. And they don't all take five-twenty-one to go up. They don't all take seventy-seven to go where they're going. A lot of them comes through the town and we can't control that. The county can't control. We're, we're impacted just because of our centralized location and it will continue. And so there needs to be a plan and this forces the hand to get people together and suggests it, at least. I really don't think this resolution is going to do that.
I, I think it's going to do quite the opposite, and I know we can't control the traffic coming through, but we can control what happens here. And again, these high-density developments are part of the problem.
So with that being said, could I get a motion to approve? I didn't get the resolution number. Can you scroll back up to the top?
That's a motion.
I don't have it on the agenda.
Is that, yeah. That's right. I don't think that's...
No, this is the one. Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't have a resolution number.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Is there a possibility to table this for a couple of weeks to see? You have a meeting tomorrow.
We do. We have a CARPO meeting tomorrow, and I am hoping to meet with some of the various key players tomorrow at CARPO. That's a very good point, Commissioner Wedra. Thank you. Could I get a motion to table this item for further consideration?
CARPO is not the problem, though. It's the county's the problem.
But we'll be meeting at CARPO, so CARPO is helping to facilitate a meeting with the various stakeholders.
So has the county agreed to come to that meeting?
Brian Helms will be there, yes.
Well, they have their own delegate who attends every meeting.
Okay, because, well, when I heard from their own meeting, they were not willing to bring somebody to the table.
And that's why I reached out to him and asked again.
Let's not give up just yet.
Exactly. That's, that's all we're saying. That's all we're saying.
Well, now we'll have a piece of paper to say we have to work together. Do we have a resolution?
So let's put forward a motion to table this item for, let's say, sixty days. Can I get a motion to table?
That we table this item for sixty days?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, or opposed. How do you say it?
Three have opposed, three have supported. We cannot table this item. So can I get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-four-zero-one-five? Assuming it's this year's eleven.
Twenty-two dash twenty-two-four.
Thank you.
All make a motion to approve Resolution, uh...
Twenty-two-four-zero-one...
It's on the, I think, it's on the upper left.
The left of the paper.
Ah, okay, there it is. Thank you. Uh, RES two-zero-two-four-zero-one-five. Resolution to employ Union County Board of County Commissioners to cooperate with Waxaw to develop transportation solutions.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
We'll try again, just for clarity.
Yes, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, so next up, we will go for the town leadership reports. Mr. Wells, go.
Thank you, Mayor. Two updates this evening. Now that the budget is adopted, we'll be working towards producing the budget book for everybody. I'm reviewing the final draft, adding in the last column of numbers basically for the adopted budget. Did some QA QC before I came in, got a couple of little updates to that, but once we get those updated tomorrow morning, we'll get it to print. And then we hopefully will have that for you at your next meeting, sitting here at your place, so you'll have a, a bound copy of the adopted budget. And then the latest and greatest from our state budget process is that it appears they're going to be shutting down for the month of July. They're at an impasse right now between the Senate and the House, and so it sounds like they need a cooling off period, and we'll just see what happens from there. I do know that our Senate and House legislators did submit projects, just don't know what they are, and they're probably not saying because we don't know if we're going to have a budget this time. This is why they do it bi, biannually, in case they're not able to do anything in the short session, they can still move, move along. So it'll, it'll be fluid as it always is. It can be nothing, 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 and then all of a sudden, one day, somehow they've come to a resolution and then things move very fast. So it's just something that we have to keep, keep track of, and I'll let you know what, what changes whenever it does. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Miss Dina.
Good evening. I'm Dina Savinski, your Park and Rec Director. I'll be very quick and efficient. We have our new program guide out. Please look online. Also, with programmings coming up, we look at the whole family and look at Waxaw holistically. So we have youth, teen, adult, senior, and inclusive programming. So please come and join us for the rest of June and in July. And our world-famous July Fourth Parade is coming up next week, so please join us downtown on July fourth at ten AM. Make sure you have your water bottles, it's getting hot out there. And then we have Jammin' coming up on the twelfth and Music in the Park on the twenty-sixth. We have a new Instagram for the Park and Rec, so look for fun things coming out with Instagram on that. Next month is, July is National Park and Rec Month. There's cool adventure things happening all around Waxaw during this month through programs and events. Please come and join us. We are partnering with our, our Union County Parks and Rec on a passport program where we're getting visitors from all over Union County to come through our parks, our downtown park and on Suspension Bridge, Frick Trail. So we're super excited to have some visitors. Do you have any questions?
Looks like no.
All right. Awesome. See y'all next week.
Okay. Uh, we'll open up the commissioner comments. Nope. All right. I will make a comment. My comment is to say thank you very much. We had a lively discussion. We disagreed, but we kept it civil. It was lively, but civil. So thank you very much to all the commissioners. We don't always have to agree, but we do have to be adults, and I think that's what happened tonight. So thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? We are adjourned.